Everyone to tonight's work session, we'll go ahead and get started with the discussion of the inmate phone system. Mayor Wilson, who's to discuss this?
Here they come. This, what we discussed at a meeting with the city employees from the jail department, and it's something that has been requested for a little while now, and actually something that is, if we don't get it, is a little bit of a liability not to have it, so I'll let you all go over the details.
Because I thought we made some changes to like the provider some, you know, two or three years ago, maybe?
We haven't had a phone system since 2012. That's when I started asking.
We've been looking into it, and we sent the paperwork to staff, Dan Ames and Jeff. They got the paperwork, and they were looking into the phone system to see which one would[55.78][55.78]integrate and all of that. And one of the, one of the things that came up about the phone system was, when this was going, first started, was that the FCC hadn't regulated anything on what they could charge, because it's a fee. If they call, like someone called me at my home, they could charge him a dollar a minute or whatever. But now the FCC has stepped in and regulated this, and I think that was part of the whole up, and then it just kind of got lost in the wash. But Kyle, he's, he has all the records, because he, he works in the jail, and he oversees it, and he has all of this information.
I remember something about some fifteen dollar a minute phone calls and such as that, and I could have swore we took some council action on that.
No, that's what the FCC regulated now. They've got it set, prices set, and what they can do, so it's regulated completely by the federal government now.
Okay.
Because there were, there were a lot of lawsuits from, in other jails and other areas because of just outrageous fees.
It was. So what, what do we need to do?
Well, basically what we're trying to do is get the phone system in the jail like we had it years ago. That way, it cuts down on, they, they have to have access to the phones, and it cuts down on a lot of things, them checking in at home, trying to bail out of jail, also talking to their attorney. So now what we have to do is, the correction officers have to go in, take them out, and let them use the phone. Well, if we have someone coming in, we gotta cut them off the phone and lock up, you know, we cut their minutes and stuff. But the phone that we used to have, it, it's set in the pod, you can roll it in, you can roll it out, and it plugged right in the wall. We didn't have to do anything unless, and they abused it or tried to damage the phone, and then we would take it out, and so...
Yeah, it's a fixed phone system in both of the population areas, male and female. They have access during all waking hours to it. They just, usually they set up, depending on the company, have to set up an account, and they can make the calls, but right now, we have to pull them out. Like Chief said, you know, we have to take away from booking people in, you know, observing the other inmates, so it creates a liability issue and a safety issue.
Any questions?
Yeah, just kind of help me out, understand what inmate phone system, and when you say loading the phone?
It's a phone system that they basically will have access to 24 hours a day, they could use it, and also one thing-
In their cell?
In, in the cell.
In the population area.
When, when they give it to them. It's not like it's there all the time, but-
No, it, it's phones that stay in the population. It's basically, phones almost, essentially like a pay phone, but they have to have an account, and it's charged more like a collect call. They'll, their family members set up an account with so much money on it that they can call, or with cell phones now, or they charge a per minute when they call them.
What happens if they get damaged, if they're in a cell?
Most of the companies will warranty it, they will take care of it, it'll be part of their contractual, contractual agreement to maintain any issues that there, come up with that.
So they'll, they'll, the companies will actually furnish the phone as well?
In most of the cases, they will.
Mentioned other municipalities that are doing this, that other-
I mean, this isn't just a phone system that we want, that we're looking at. Other municipalities, state, local, federal jails all have a similar system, just depending on the company that provides it.
And the FCC requires this? And the FCC requires-
No, they, they have to have right, access. The FCC just makes sure they oversee it, so it's not overcharged, like, like it used to be.
So one company isn't charging fifteen dollars a minute, and one charging three dollars.
What, what preamps illegal activities going on with this telephone? I mean, they're in jail.
It's, it's, it's not gonna be an illegal activity, believe me. It, it won't.
No.
We, we, we have to be careful about that, but basically what, what happens is, it's, it's like, set up like the state penitentiary phone, if you know how they set it.
Been a long time.
Never been there?
Never, a frequent place.
Basically, if I call you and I tell you to go get your drugs and stuff-
Somebody knows it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, you know, that's kind of an obvious question.
And mostly systems now, too, on, they, you can block phone numbers, so if there's, if it's domestic violence or any kind of assault, we can block the numbers and protect the victims.
Tempting a witness or tempting somebody on the telephone, 2:00 in the morning.
No, they won't be able to access it, too. They usually, we do, way we do it, we do wake up at 6:00 and lights out at 10:00, so they're in their cells. This is just in the, the block area, which, the old system we had, we had access to turn on the, off and on the phone, so they would have to, you know, clean their cells and everything before we allow access to the phone. So it actually also is a tool for us to say, you know, when y'all do what y'all are supposed to do, then y'all will get, you know, access to it. So it helps us as well.
So, so it, I'm a little confused. I thought I heard it was in each cell, but I kind of hear it's in the block, like it's in the common area.
It's in the female, female block and the males block. We, we have two big rooms where they are. It's not in the cells. The cells are like, that door, this door, some more doors, and they are buzzed out to come in the common area where they can eat their lunch and watch television and stuff like that.
And, and, so I guess, I mean, if there's no cost, and I do think that they were getting raked over the coals.
Yeah, they were, they were.
And that doesn't seem fair to even people that are incarcerated. The, if, if it's no cost to us, I don't, I just want to know if there's-
Well, it's, it's basically gonna be a saving, because the phones, when they visitation phones, we're paying what, you said, a twenty dollar?
When they built the jail, our visitation phones were designed on a battery operation. We have to use C batteries to operate those phones, and that would be something we want to put in the proposal or the bid, is to replace those phones, because we're having to do, it's four C batteries, so, per three phones, so we're looking at twenty dollars every week or two to keep the visitation phones up. So if we can save that money, that's a lot over years.
But y'all are okay with the phones in the common area?
Right. And plus, the jail will get a percentage, I don't know, it's a small percentage of whatever it is, but we're not really looking at that. We, we just want, basically, to have the phones in. That way, it won't stop them. We have people coming in every day to do fingerprints, on Sunday they have visitation, and all of this, if somebody comes in and they, "I need to use phone," and then you got two people back there, one watching and one got to get them out and stuff, and whenever someone is brought into the jail, whether it's for fingerprints or for to get booked in, everybody has to be locked down. It's a safety issue. You can't have someone on the phone over here, even if you've been knowing them 100 years, you can't have them out on the phone. They gotta be locked down before you bring someone else in.
So you'd put this out for bid, and what are they bidding on? They bidding on lowest price to the city or lowest price to the inmate? How do they, what are the, what is the bid based on?
Well, basically, what we're looking at, the bid, I think, one of the things the bid would be looked at is what they're gonna be bringing to the table for the city. If the phones are gonna be accessible to everything that we need, and that's one of the things we don't really need to get into right now, and that's, that's what we're gonna be looking at.
Okay. Y'all feel confident y'all can write those bid specs then, later?
Right.
Counsel, we have feedback? Mayor feedback?
No problem. I'm a question's answer.
Sounds like, get together a bid package.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. Follow-up discussion of the HVAC at the James P. Nick Center?
Good afternoon.
Is this also concerning the agenda item as well?
Yes, sir, this is, yes, sir, you are correct, Mr. President.
Just making sure there wasn't a completely separate item, I wouldn't think so, but-
Yes, number 13. I, I do just want to try to tell you what, how we got to this point. When, when looking at the situation, there's, there's a variety of issues that have occurred. First of all, the, the largest area within the Nick Center is the ballroom, and I think that's 6,500 square feet, and it, it is right now at one-third capacity. There's, there's three air handler units that produces either heated or cooled air for that space. Two of them are basically out of commission. Then, and I don't want to butcher this, because it's not mayor's expertise, is that building was designed to have a positive atmosphere, and it brings in fresh air that feeds all of the systems within there, and has a series of mechanical controllers that dampers, that open and close, and allow that air loading to all the different units. That unit that brings in that, that fresh air is completely offline and not working, so that, that's replacing this, as well as replacing and getting all of those fresh air dampeners in the system, so it has the, the positive air pressure and it's fixed. So this, this is a, a complete retrofit. By using the Purchasing Alliance, this was a way where we did not have to go and, one, hire a mechanical engineer to do a fix, go out for bid, go through all that process, because they will provide the mechanical engineer through train, they will not only do all the design, as well as provide the equipment, as well as provide the contractor to do all the work and provide the warranty that comes with it. And that's one of the beauties, is, is that there's a time component here, because the only, if you choose to act tonight, the only time component is the manufacturer of the equipment. They will, they're six to eight weeks out is what their worst-case scenario is, as opposed to designing a fix, going out and independently bidding, and everything else. So, you know, I know that number is high, it even caught me off-guard when I saw it. Lance was pretty convinced we were north of $100,000, but I don't think he was quite prepared for being that far north. But that, I do want to understand, this is not a single unit or a single problem, it's a series of systematic issues that are gonna be corrected and corrected correctly. So I'll be glad to field any more questions, and I think the, the worst concern is, is that, as I understand it through Jim, that facility is a high-use facility. There's a lot of third-party rentals that go on, it's a very popular place to have receptions and things of that nature, and, you know, the, the fear is not having adequate condition space during those events, especially as we get into the July and August, September, the warm months.
Questions, Counsel? Most good.
I've got one.
Yep.
Of the, let's assume we were gonna rip out the entire thing and replace the whole thing. That would be 100%. What amount of this are we fixing of that 100%? Is this 60% being fixed or 80% being fixed?
I think you're close to 60%. Yes, sir.
Of putting in this new, newer stuff?
Starting from scratch and starting over. And, you know, and again, I, I think because of the way the ductwork's and all that are designed, you still have to go with the system that has the fresh return air that feeds the different ones. So, you know, I, I think the, the only good news here is, or the big good news here, is the replacement equipment that will be doing the same function as originally designed will be a higher efficiency equipment, just because the new, new systems are generally much more efficient than the ones that they're replacing that are aged.
I guess kind of as a follow-on to Kevin's, one of the questions that I have in my mind is that if we were, it's like totaling a car, a lot of times insurance comes saying we're just totaling it. If we had gone out for bid for an entirely new system, we don't know what the cost of that would have been. We're going with a train system, maybe we could have gone with a carrier system that brand-new, 100% brand-new, would, would have been less or equal, so...
That's an absolute possibility. I don't, you know, again, when my involvement got with this, you know, I did not want us to get into a point where we did not have a solution to bring forward. I can't tell you 100% this is the best solution, but it is one that is workable right now, and my greatest fear is that we, if we did go through that exercise, what if we come back to the same place we are today? Or even if we saved 10%, but we're not getting the problem fixed till after the summer's done? That, that was my, my concern.
How do we, how do we get ahead of the game here? How do we move forward with, with, you know, this is not the first time that we've heard that the Nick HVAC system needed, needed work. I mean, it's, I've been hearing about this for a minimum of a year, so-
Maintenance contracts. Maintenance contracts.
Right. So, I mean, I hear that, and I just want to try to find a solution that, you know, we knew it a year ago, and then you'd say, "Well, we, we don't want to do it in the winter, because then we can't heat it, because it'd get too cold," and now we're kind of in springtime, which would be ideal, but, you know, you say, "Well, we don't want to run the risk of it being July or August before we get it fixed, because then we have the summer months where it's so hot." So how do we, how do we give ourselves the best opportunity to, to address these issues without, without having only one option? Because that, I guess that's where I get hung up here, is we, we only have one option, and we're, we're only presented with one option. We don't have Ream and Carrier and Goodman or whoever giving us, you know, quotes for an entire system. And I understand if you go with this, you gotta go with, with train. We're locked into train. Train knows we're locked into train. What's that, what's that costing us?
That's a great question, and, and I think, you know, I will tell you that, that one of the strategic goals that, that I've discussed with the mayor, and I'll discuss it with you, is that, one, we've got to get into a better preventative program. You know, first of all, having maintenance contracts on the chillers and things like that are, yes, there, there's a cost to it, but there's also proving life cycle value to that, that you, you know, you're making sure it's maintained, when you, you're getting to, you're identifying problems before they become catastrophic, and they're getting fixed when it's much cheaper to fix it. And, you know, being, working with different department heads over these facilities to help them plan in the budget for these things, so they don't become crisis, because that's what, that's kind of how this is. This is crisis management, and that's not fair to you, and it's not fair to anybody, and it's not the best value for our citizens. You know, there's always gonna be the air conditioning that was supposed to be good for a few more years, it breaks down, but especially on the buildings that have major unit systems, there are preventative maintenance plans and programs that you can put out on the streets, that you do get a good return, because they stay on top of the lubrication and changing out the, those things that are wear items and inspecting those, those items to make sure that you get the maximum longevity. The other thing is, is those preventive maintenance programs usually come with a type of warranty associated with them, meaning that if there is a failure, then there is a discount for that repair, because it was under that preventive maintenance contract and, and that type of thing. So there, there's some value there, because I, I know I've only been involved in one chiller failure, but that replacement was $450,000. That's, that's a lot of money for a single piece of equipment, and it's worth, you know, investing that, that service contract to make sure it lasts its total life cycle.
I just want to mention that, I mean, the reality with all of our buildings is that we're just not in a position of maintenance, but there's just so much repair that has to happen across the board with all of our buildings. But I think we did take a step in the right direction by adding to the building maintenance or creating that department, because, you know, we do need to look at just that shift from, you know, being reactionary to proactive, and that's what this department will be able to do when we get all of the people that we need in that department. And, and then relating it back to what we spend on maintenance for cars. You know, we, we have a mechanic department, the budget is a million dollars a year. And that's, we really need to have a building maintenance department and look at that as a priority over that mechanic. That's where we, I think we can save and cut, so...
So, you know, and that's, you know, I will tell you, between now and budget time, that's gonna be the question that I'm gonna challenge my, my building maintenance staff, is that we have sat down, and at least if it's simple as a spreadsheet, put in every HVAC unit, and at least to the best of our ability, date it and age it, so that we know is it relatively due. If it's 15, 16 years old, is there, there's their exposure? And then work with those department heads that are over those facilities, because that's the greatest challenge, is we gotta have their buy-in and knowledge, too, because, you know, they need to participate in that process of being aware of what is the condition. Because, you know, here's the reality, every HVAC unit and every roof has, has a time life, and eventually, every roof and every HVAC unit's gonna have to be replaced or upgraded, and, and that's just the reality. And being able to keep you, as the counsel, advised that we think that, you know, in this fiscal year is when we're gonna have to deal with this major building capital issue, is just good planning, and, and it keeps some of the surprises at bay. There's always gonna be those failures you can't anticipate, but, but generally, they're pretty predictable.
Any other questions?
No, and I'd also like to, you know, Richard talked about the positive pressure, without, no fresh air, that building's in negative pressure, and that's not good for a building, so the faster it can be remedied, the better.
And we have water, it's, there's moisture issue that we're battling there because of the, not having that positive pressure, so, and that's not really good for the building either, so...
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Richard.
All right. Counsel, committee updates? Councilman Robinson?
Don't have any. I was unable to attend my sessions last week.
Okay. Councilman Boone?
Yeah, we had a real good personnel board meeting last week. Basically, it's concerning, we get back on the safety issues, and Ron Hayes, our newest member, who I think can be a tremendous asset to the board, has volunteered his services. He spent most of his life working with safety issues on different companies, different areas of expertise, and he's gonna give us his knowledge and do this all on his own time to help with the employees to start setting up a safety management program, that I'm truly hoping that the mayor, heads of departments, the supervisors, and all the employees will buy into, because it is of the utmost importance to get this implemented. Basically, we discussed that, and Ron Hayes gave an overview of everything he liked to do. It was very good. Also, we had a harbor board meeting, to which we are, have started the seawall that's gonna help hold the concrete structure for the tank, and it's almost completed, and we're in hopes of, I think they were saying to do it, pour the slab in, in hopes next week, which I guess I'm stealing Drew's thunder if he comes to me. Anyway, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Brown?
No update.
And then I don't have any updates either. Department heads, and I apologize for not making the department head meeting prior, it's just, it's almost impossible to get away another hour early on, on a council meeting day. But I, I have some specific questions to maybe ask the department heads about our agenda tonight, but before I do so, I'll ask the department heads if they have specific updates or reports to give.
Just kind of some updates on some old business. We finally, believe it or not, had our friends from FEMA and Alabama Mercy Management in for our kind of final walkthrough of the damage due to Hurricane Nate, and if you don't recall, many, many, many months ago, we had a hurricane. FEMA, FEMA did arrive on Friday, had a great meeting. I think that they have the majority of what they need to process the public assistant grant, so, so we're gonna hopefully work with John Saraceno and our folks in finance and treasury to get that completely finished up. The good news is, we've had all the paperwork kind of done and waiting for them, and, and we're there. The other thing, and this is really one of those old business things, but today, they finished forming the abutments for the pedestrian bridge across Fly Creek. That project has been a challenge, but we have, we have finally persevered, and the cool thing is, is once those abutments are cured, they'll actually set that bridge in place. It's a, a single span, and it's, you hadn't seen it in the lay, lay-down yard out there east of town. It's pretty cool, and hopefully, you know, we'll be getting y'all out there for ribbon cutting before you know it. I know I've, I've mentioned that several times since I've been here in my, in my six months, but it is closer to being reality than ever. And, and I wanna, I wanna say thank you to you as a counsel, and thank you to the mayor. We just completed the process of annual evaluations, and we have made our recommendations from Public Works and all these other departments, as, based on the additional merit raise that you allowed us to prove that we can do a good job with that. And just from a general broad spectrum in Public Works, this is really kind of how it all fell out. As you know, every hourly employee through your generosity got a 1.5% raise across the board. That left a half percent of the payroll in Public Works to be distributed or recommended to the mayor and treasurer as, as an additional merit. And what we were able to do is, is the top third in every division of Public Works, it got recommended for a merit, and, and the highest performers got a little bit better as it went down in that top third, but, but the, the effective difference is that the minimum anybody got was at least an additional 1%. So that means that if they got the 1.5, and if the mayor and treasurer approves the numbers, they're gonna see, the worst they're gonna see is a net effect of 2.5%, whereas the gentleman or lady then, and who was the top performer in each division of the department, it just depended what, what they were making as a percentage-wise, but I can tell you, there's one young man who's an excellent employee, he's making less than $10 an hour, you know, we put him in for a 35% rate, a 35 cent raise, and when you make less than $10, that, that turns out to be a pretty good raise, 3.5%, a little bit better than that. So thank you for allowing that. It was tough, because we, we really made the supervisors take time and justify their scoring. If they gave them a real good score, there needed to be a comment there why that score was given, and, and maybe if they had an area they weren't performing in, we wanted them to, to describe what the issue, maybe it was a tardiness or some issue like that, and make sure they discussed it. But I, I hope we, the results will be that we've challenged those that were close on the bubble to step up their game and to work a little harder and to get in that range next year, and hopefully, those that do get the additional raise realize that we recognize the contribution they make to our, our team here as a city employee and a Public Works employee. So thank you there.
I just have two questions. One, do you have any ETA on when the money will be coming in from the grant for the Hurricane Nate? I mean, they give any indication, two months, a month, or tomorrow?
Generally, once, they have to complete the project worksheet, okay? We have given them everything that they need for the different categories, whether it was some debris cleanup, or the sand removal at North Beach, or whatever, you know, the, the equipment rate and all that. So they have all that. The, the biggest issue that, that was remaining is they needed the environmental documentation, which I, I sent them on Friday for the peers, and there was one other, the sourcing of the sand that we put on Magnolia Beach, and we, we've got that pulled up today, and I'm gonna forward that. They just wanted to make sure it said coarse, washed, beach-quality sand, so, and so, how long that takes? Usually, once the project worksheet gets approved, and here's the good news, is there's no speculation anymore, we know what we spent on everything. So the numbers that they, we've given them are the, the actual numbers, so it's not like that we have to then make adjustments when receipts come in or, or final things are tallied, that's all done. So I think there's a chance that as soon as those worksheets are approved, that money, you know, they put it in an account where the treasurer and them have through EMA, then that money comes in right away once it's approved, so. But I have, I've never been on that side of it, I've always been on the supply side, not the, the distribution side of the funds, so, but it should be quick.
All right. The only other question is, I'd love to watch them set that bridge. Do you happen to know when-
I will, because I, and I hate it, I wanted to get out there when they were drilling the, the helical piles, and I missed that, but there's, got some more to do for the approaches, but I will let you know when bridge-setting day is, because I want to be there as well, so...
I appreciate it.
Where is that bridge? You said it's sitting on the-
I'm gonna get this wrong, it's out on-
On 13?
13 and 32, I think. Have you seen it?
Yeah, I saw it sitting, I was, it looks like the bridge.
Yeah, that's it.
Just sitting out there.
Yeah, it's just a lonely bridge right now, but it's getting ready to have a home, so...
One more question, you talked about the re-nourishing of the Magnolia Beach sand. We need to look into what, you know, a real solution for that, rather than just keeping, dumping sand out there after every storm?
I agree.
I know it's been talked about in the past.
I will tell you, when they released the notice on the hazard mitigation funds, we did, I did, Dr. Douglas had already done some work on what it would take to put a breakwater there to make that beach erosion and escarpment problem go away completely. We did upload that into the hopper with hazard mitigation. I will tell you that that was something that the, the folks at the county kind of rushed through. They picked a bunch of projects that probably are not gonna pass mustard, so there may be another bite at that apple, but I know that one of the things that we've talked about with the bucket one funding for the resilient- the resilient shoreline here is that, worst case, that breakwater at, at Dr. Douglas's current estimates is about a $280,000 project. I think it's the mayor and mine's intent that in that $6.2 million bucket, there's $280,000 to do that, that one area because that solves that problem for life, like you say. So, I agree.
So we did, we've had the study performed, we had paid him, I believe, to perform the study.
Yes.
He's made recommendations as to what we'll do to fix it. So the engineering?
Yeah.
Study plan has been put together and he may have even done that for, for North Beach, am I wrong? He's done some other?
He's done a great deal of work, but he does have a certain section of, you know, now, you know, that, that it would be a very short step to go from what he has already done to actually getting something out in the street to get, get a contractor to give us a bid. The, the big, the big challenge is, is what permitting would be required. And that's always, you know, when you call the corps up and ask them, that's, that's a loaded question every time you ask it, but.
They're full of answers. Not only you want to hear.
Sometimes it is. But yes, that, that is a, a reoccurring problem and I, just in my quick research, I think in the last decade, we've put at least, this is just the sand cost, over $27,000 with the sand on that beach. So that's not counting the labor to, to put it there and everything else, that's just the material cost, so. And it's going to, and it's already escarped again, there's probably about a three foot escarpment there in, in that bin heading back up to the Pier Avenue boat ramp, so. All right, thank you.
Mr. Johnson, I don't know if I'm going to need you for these, I'm kind of going to jump ahead to the, to the agenda meeting to maybe save us some time, but Mr. Peterson might need you, yep. So, jumping to number eight, the engineering services for the stormwater outfall study, I believe that was for the Tatumville gully?
That's correct, and as you know, we have a GOMA grant that is a hard cash grant of 22.5, which is 100% to go to the cost of the engineering for that. And this was one of those that, that you as a council authorized us to, to apply for and get the grant. The thing is, is we didn't do the next step was that is get, get the engineering part of it done and come back with the not exceed price, and this is just a, getting that correct so that you can authorize that and cut loose Mount McDonald to, to, to do that watershed study for Tatumville gully.
What are we expecting to, to come away with? You know, I'm looking at a lot of this stuff, the hydraulic models, hydraulic model development, the model setup, simulations such as that. Ultimately, what are we trying to, to do with that, with that gully? What do we think, do we think there's a problem there now and are we trying to fix the problem?
I think, first of all, we, we want a baseline to tell us what it's doing today for the different storm events. And we, we already know through just historical and known areas that there's a few, few, few issue areas, especially down on Middle Street, closing in on Dogwood where the, the gully has that crossing there and just along Mershan and some other areas. So we're going to be able to establish a baseline, we're going to have a working model that our goal is that if we get a development proposal in that watershed, we'll be able to then in-house take the post-development photographs from that proposed development, incorporate in the model and see if it adds velocity or stresses in areas that are already have issues. But the other, I think the biggest thing is, is we want the result of that study to show us in locations, opportunities to mitigate current problems, especially in a couple of, of areas that we know we have repeated flooding events, is hopefully that model's going to demonstrate if we put a little regional detention in this location, we resolve this problem. That is probably the number one thing, we want a model that tells us what's going on, a model that we can add information to, to see how it changes what's going on and then identify areas that we can make improvements. Some of it may be small projects in-house, some may be a little bit more larger in regional end thinking, but to give us a baseline to start with.
You'll almost never hear me say this in a council meeting, but that sounds like a small amount of money, the $45,000 to perform all of that.
I think, you know, I, I think we're getting a value here and, and, you know, we're going to be doing a lot of the legwork ourself, but, you know, the key thing is the surveying parts of it and the actual creating the model and everything else, you know, that's what we're, we're paying for and I think we are getting a good value.
Because what you're telling me, it sounded like a lot of bang for the buck and, you know, very doable, that's why I've looked at the number. Well, can we get all that done?
Well, and, and we, we started this process with a partner in, in Mount McDonald and they kind of realized that, that what, what the grant was going to provide, that's what they were going to be the, the scope of.
Tell them they're not allowed to quote me on that now.
Okay, well, we won't, we don't want them getting a big hit, sir, so we'll, we'll keep that to ourselves, so.
All right. All right. Next, next item on the agenda was number nine, and that's to select the multiple professional engineering services, and there was projects one through five. And Mr. Peterson, this may also include you, I don't know who's best to answer this question, but I guess one of the fundamental questions that I have about that is, with choosing various engineering firms to do the various projects, how are they going to communicate and are we going to be inefficient by not having one engineering firm? I don't mind spreading the wealth, I think it's a good idea, I'd like to see more of, you know, when we have projects, different engineering companies, but for something of this magnitude, if one company or firm is working on one solution and it doesn't exactly jive with what the, you know, the person downstream is doing, are we going to be back to the drawing board and having to redo some of this, or is it a good idea to have multiple? How does that, how does that work?
Well, I, I think the two big projects are the Church Street Outfall and the outfall that runs around the Fairhope Avenue. And what it takes to design that will be a, a kind of a understanding and a projection of growth in the areas that are served by those outfall lines. The, the Grand Hotel is just a study. The, the Fells Mobile Street Lift Station is a confined service area now that won't change.
Okay.
So everything besides that will be part of two separate transmission basins, basically. One terminates at currently the Doghouse Manhole or Lift Station and one currently terminates at the South Section Street Lift Station, which both of those will be the next two projects that will come out of this first phase of projects will be, what do we do now with the, with the two transmission systems that deliver flow into those two outfall systems, we're going to improve. And there may be options to reroute forced mains around some of those and avoid pumping more than, you know, once, twice, or three times, you know, each flow. Like for instance, the Grand Hotel, you know, it gets sewer from County Road 1 and then it pumps to the Twin Beach Lift Station and then that pumps to the South Section Lift Station, then it may be we can find ways to bypass some of those and minimize that number of different pumps.
Mayor, will this, can we use money from the Restore Act?
Not, not on this, we can't spend any money before the individual projects are approved by treasury, which would, should be beginning, end of this year or beginning of next year, but those monies are to go specifically to the rehabilitation part of it.
Okay, so they're not paying for the engineering services?
No, but we do, we did find out last week during our meeting that 3% is going to be given on top of the awarded funds for planning and admin. I didn't know that, it's over $500,000, so.
Okay. All right. Any questions? All right, yep, thank you. All right. If, if there's nothing else, any other department heads have anything to add? Yes?
I do want to.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
We did get a diver out Friday and, and they found a diver on the outfall line.
Oh, okay.
And there is a, adjacent to one of the concrete anchors and the breach is from about 2 o'clock to about 10 o'clock and, and it opens up at the top to about three quarters of an inch.
There was a Yamaha outboard laying beside it?
I didn't see that one. But, so I've asked Volker to verify the, the pipe size and the wall thickness and determine what type of wraparound sleeve we can put on that. We'll probably also look at adding a concrete anchor far enough away from that seam so that we can get a solid wrap around where the breach is, but hopefully, you know, we're looking at, he was talking about maybe $5,000 to $6,000 to get in there and do a, a very thin temporary patch, and I said, well, if we're going to do that, we might as well just go ahead and, so we're probably looking at three or four times that amount, the time you excavate around the pipe and get the rest of that in there.
That's wonderful.
So we're, I think it'll be pretty good and I think it'll be pretty quick.
Would that be a concrete, would they cast that in place or how do they?
No, it'll be two-piece, it'll be a two-piece system and it'll be, you know, it'll be like a square with a, with a half a semi-circle cut out of it and then it'll just fit around the pipe and bolt together is how that anchor block will put together. And then we'll take, taking the other one, well, yeah, that's why they gotta, they gotta pull the sand out from around that pipe and expose it to where they can get all that in there, including the wraparound sleeve on the, on the breach. But hopefully, you know, if we get a 16-inch wide sleeve and then, you know, the, the anchor block itself is about 12 inches, so we're going to be excavating out probably five feet around that section of that pipe just to get all the way under it and be able to have it, which can be a lot of sand. I've never pulled sand out of the bottom of the bay to get, to create a hole, but it'll probably be a pretty good tapered, you know, excavation there and hopefully we'll be able to just to pump it right off into the bay, you know.
Did the diver by chance go to the end of the outfall just to make sure there's not some minor damage that we hadn't, you know, that we missed or anything?
No, sir, but I do want to get back on whether we ought to put a sign up and anchorage, you know, we talked about that before and I, I think that is wise to do that. So we'll be, as I investigate with the Corps of Engineers on the actual excavation techniques that they allow to expose that pipeline, I'll be working to find out what they recommend in terms of time.
So that pipe's actually sitting on the floor of the bay or is it buried in the same?
The top of the pipe is about three foot below the floor of the bay.
That's pretty significant.
And, and when you cross it in a boat with a depth finder, you'll see the depth finder go down and come back up where, where it's open the pipe. So, so the water coming out has just kind of washed all that away, basically. And it seems, I mean, it's just one of those unfortunate things and I don't know if it was a bad well to start with or if it's just over time, there was enough stress on that particular, you know, with, with the anchor right there beside it, could have been enough stress on that well that caused it, I don't know. But, but we'll, we'll get that fixed. I am working too with, you know, the Van Antrup subdivision was approved and, and then the Portico over here was approved as well, and both of those areas, the fire protection that we gain for the entire neighborhood, if we work a little bit with the developer, we can add a secondary feed from the main system at section at Van Antrup and, and we can increase the available fire flow to the residents. The, the issue with the way the subdivision regulations are, you meet ISO standards, which the ISO standard is, is really about the setback between the buildings and not necessarily the zoning or anything that goes with it. So, the Van Antrup, they can get the fire protection if they extend the side setbacks on the property to allow for that separation with, with what's there now. But the houses that are built around it are a little bit closer than that and really the, the available fire protection for those areas is a little bit short really by ISO standards. And I don't know how that affects our rating, you know, they go through every three years or so and, and rate the system and then we'll have, like right now, we're in ISO 4, you know, as far as the fire rating goes. I just, I think if, if we've got people in there working and creating loop systems in there, if we can supplement that a little bit with an extra connection to section, I think it's, if we can do that, I'd like to work with the developer on doing that. And then the same thing with Portico, the, the line on Fairhope Avenue goes from six to four in front of Ace Hardware and it continues four until it gets to Fairwood. And because of that, there's really no fire, if you ride down Fairhope Avenue, you won't see any fire hydrants on that section of the street, so this, by having the developer, he's extending what he needs to extend to create the fire protection he needs, but if we can add a little bit more to that and get it to where it'll serve the purpose for the people that are adjacent to it, I think that would be a positive thing too. So I'm just working on how to make it to where we can do either in-kind construction or native construction or some methodology that is fair to what it takes for us to be able to help do that.
Is that just a minimal impact?
And I'll get with Marcus somehow, that'll work and hopefully that'll come together pretty easy, but we'll see how it goes.
We've been looking forward to the potential of a new well sometime in the future. I guess that's just a small bump in our demand, if you had to go to a six inch line from a four inch line.
Well, and this is really all about just capacity when it comes to peak flow for firefighting. I mean, we're talking about that, that instantaneous requirement to fight fires and, and, you know, the.
I was kind of thinking ahead.
Yeah, well, and we, we do need to, that's this whole groundwater monitoring plan where we're looking at the available capacities in these wellfields we have, that, that'll come in big in terms of how much water we can push through that system. And the last thing is the tank, I think they are making progress now more than they have been, they're putting the drape system up and the containment system and the contractor's supervisor for that project is going to be here Monday and Tuesday next week and we're going to iron out some of the details to what the completion schedules can be and how we can get that thing going. And I talked to another subcontractor today too that has some available people and I described the issues that we have, you know, and the clearances that are required and then, so I gave them the contractor's name to, to call and, and see if they can't send an extra crew. So anything we can do to help, that's what we're trying to accomplish.
Anything else, councilmembers?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I sit here? Because I've got hands full of stuff. Okay. So not, this is not on the agenda and this came up at the last, at the last minute, but I was contacted yesterday, When It Rains It Pours, by two different people that want to film in Fairhope. One of them, and I want to get my facts right here, so I'm going to pull up my notes, they're looking at, they'd like to come April 30th and May 1st, so that does not give us 10 days. And the reason is, there is a boat apparently coming from the Virgin Islands up here that will, wants to park at the end of the Fairhope Municipal Pier. And they want to shoot, the filming will be onto the boat, but at the end of the pier, and it'll be all night shooting, but at the end of the pier, they'll be shooting onto the boat, so there will be crews there on the, you know, on the pier itself. They will be, they're bringing 35 crew that will stay in our hotels and eat at our restaurants and all those things that we enjoy and, you know, it's an economic impact obviously, but it's also the wrap-up shooting for, it's a major motion picture and this will be, I guess some of the, some of the wrap-up scenes for it. I would consider it by the definition in our ordinance, low impact. I have talked to chief about this just because I think that they will have to hire a police officer or two just to make sure when they are shooting, people don't try to come down there because there'll be some celebrities there and, at the end of the pier area. So, the problems are, or I guess the challenges in what I'm bringing here, so that's one. The other one is the Food Network. They want to do, and again, it doesn't give us a lot of time for, before the next, we don't have any other council meeting, they're coming May 8th or May 9th, shooting at a local restaurant indoors, which is actually outside of the city limits, but they would like to do what's called a walk-in talk on the pier, so it would be one to two hours between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. For both of these, they're asking consideration for us to waive the $5,000 deposit and $1,000 fee. And I know we've talked a little bit and we haven't really gotten into the details of how we might update our film ordinance, but from what I understand from the state film office and from people that film nationally in other places, we are one of the highest in the country and, and I know we want to protect Fairhope, so I'm not, but at the same time, to me, this is an investment in our, in tourism and, it's, it's advertising and I know some people might say, no, we don't want more advertising in Fairhope, but the word is already out about Fairhope. the word is already out about Fairhope and if we have people that film and bring crews and spend money and aren't making a big impact in terms of closing our streets and all of that, because there'll be no street closures or anything for any of this, um, I mean, my, my recommendation would be to let, let them both come because they're spending money here, provide, you know, very little impact, if any, to us other than advertising for our local restaurants and then in this case, I mean, my hope is it goes off and wins great awards like this last film, that other movie that was just shot here and won an Oscar. So, um, I think it's good for us creatively, you know, culturally, I think it fits with who we are, but, I mean, obviously with the ordinance it stands and so anything we do that is contrary to the ordinance or, you know, is an exception, which it is, there is language here saying that we have the ability to do that for low-impact film in the ordinance.
Ability to do what?
Uh, to waive, mhm, to waive, to make exceptions for any of this is, is in here, but it's a, you know, for low-impact only. So if it closed streets, affected businesses, all these things, that would not be considered low-impact. If it was in a neighborhood and there was a lot of noise and, you know, faux gunshots and that kind of thing, that's not low-impact, but this, both of these would be considered, um, you know, low-impact films, um, or low-impact filming. Uh, they both also have the liability insurance, will name Fairhope as an additional insured on their policies. These are the things I've had time to check from Sunday till now, so, but, um, those are the most important things that, um, that we meet all these standards. I'm looking to see if there's anything else. I talked to Marcus about it too, just trying to see if there's anything I'm missing in the ordinance. It says the city reserves the right to change, modify, update, or waive provisions of these guidelines when deemed necessary. So, uh, I'm not an attorney, so.
Counsel, for anybody that wants to know, that April 30th and May 1st is a Monday and Tuesday.
That would be during the middle of the night though, right?
Uh, Monday and Tuesday, so, um, sun, they said an hour around, within an hour of sunset to, into the night, mhm, mostly night shooting, I mean, and it's two days or two nights, I should say.
And the 8th and 9th would be a Tuesday, Wednesday.
And that's when we're talking about in the city, it'd only be, the restaurant is outside the limits.
The restaurant.
But they want the one to two hours on the pier.
They would like to do a walk-in talk on the pier. So in that, again, it's citizen films and they are producing for the Food Network, The Seaside Shacks and Snacks, Snacks and Shacks. It's a, it's a new show. And one thing I didn't understand, you know, these new shows are kind of low-budget and even though this other film is a major motion picture, it's being self-financed by the producer who's local. So, I mean, there are, sometimes I'll think, well, they're the Food Network, they have all this money, but this is a new show and it's a, you know, they run them on a tight budget until they're successful and they get a lot of sponsors and things. So this, you know, this would be an example of that, trying to understand all the ins and outs of this business.
Counsel, comments, questions?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, you know, as, as our resident stickler for the rules, um, you know, I, I don't have any problem with this. I mean, you know, in my opinion, you know, the ordinance gives us, gives us the ability to waive or alter these fees under certain circumstances. Obviously, the 10-day limit would have to be adjusted because we don't have 10 days from now to when they're coming. Um, you know, if it was, I guess what Sherri Lee's described as higher impact, meaning street closures and something like that, I'd be less inclined to waive any fee, but because of, of where they're shooting, how long they're shooting and what I envision to be little impact, I don't have any issue with it.
I did owe all that that you just said. I, I initially, you know, I want to hold my hand out and say, no, 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 but-
No, not at all.
You've convinced me that that's low-impact.
Kevin, I'm nothing if not flexible.
No problem. I just, you know, my point was, I want to talk to a couple of people.
I think that's-
I'm staying corrected.
I mean, if the attorney is okay, even though you're not in that capacity at this table right now.
I think it's a terrific, you know, as I told you, I think it's a terrific idea. I think the gentleman that's shooting it is good for Fairhope and, uh, I think it's a very good, you know, this whole project to me is good for Fairhope.
Yeah, well, to me though-
It's a win-win all the way across the board.
The having hotel rooms booked and going out and all that kind of stuff, that doesn't, that doesn't do it for me. I think, you know, we, we have that, we modified that film ordinance a couple of times and thought we had it right, but if it does have the provision for low-impact, I think that it, I think that it meets it.
I just require a spot as an extra, that's it, nothing big.
I know.
A little bit of camera.
If the producer is watching.
You can no longer vote on a resolution.
That'll work.
Right, oh no.
So now we're down to three people that can vote on it, please, nobody else.
Only if he gets, only if he gets paid.
As a non-voting member, can I ask?
Let him get paid, good for him.
So, so counsel, I, no, it has to be unanimous to walk it on tonight, so.
Right.
Am I hearing everybody's going, do we have, do you have a resolution prepared or are you just-
Uh, Marcus is preparing.
Or is the resolution just to waive the fee, time requirement on the application?
Marcus, Marcus is on it, right, Mark?
Yeah, he's on it. He's being prepared.
Well, he's being prepared right now.
Okay.
Not knowing what direction this would go, so, but so yes, it would be for both of these and I have the dates and I can, Marcus, give you everything you need.
Power boat or sailboat?
Um, sailboat, yeah, it's a sailboat, it's a sailboat, it's a sailboat.
It's a boat.
It's a boat, it floats.
All right.
I know there's a difference, don't, I'm not saying that, I'm just like, why is there a difference to you or?
Is it a boat or a yacht?
It's gotta be.
I'm told there's a difference.
No, it's big, it's a big.
I'm saying if it's a big yacht, tell them be careful if it heads north, there's a pipe in the sand out there.
Oh, well, he, they do have, their permits from the Coast Guard already, so hopefully the Coast Guard is working with them to tell them that, uh, but I will pass that along.
Okay. Anything else, Sherri?
Only thing, other thing I wanted to hand these out to y'all, um, just to take with you. So this is, uh, the results from that study and Richard Johnson and I will be working on the implementation plan for this, so I wanted y'all to just, the Danburg one, I don't know if y'all ever got a printed copy, but they were given to me by NPO and these, I just wanted y'all to have the physical copy with you, so when we come back, we can discuss it. So it's homework, homework assignment.
I figured I was the closest to get them. Pass that down to my colleague down there.
And then I've got one for Jimmy, I'll put it in his box. Um, and that's, we have a street closure thing on the-
Do you have one?
I do.
Yeah, but, you want, go ahead and discuss what I-
I'll take it.
We do have street closures on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, 18?
Um, for, it's for Art Walk, first Friday. 18, oh, you're asking me the number, sorry.
And, and why was it only for the May the 4th?
Um, it's a trial. We're doing a trial, we met with the Downtown Fairhope Business Association, um, and citizens and police department and internally with Public Works, and so we decided this would be a test to see how it works and that way we can get feedback and if people really love it, we can do it every time and I'm sorry to do it, I guess we could have done the opposite and improved it for all the time and then taken it back.
No, I liked it, I liked it, no, what is a parking rodeo?
I have charged the Bike Ped Committee with coming up with a, a logo for that. Um, yeah, this is the reverse angled parking that, Robert, this is your brainchild.
Yes. They're on Johnson Street, the trial run for the backend parking will be that-
See how many cars get hit.
Be, they're going to livestream video so you can watch Johnson Street.
That is a good idea, actually. Oh my gosh. We're going to practice and we did show at the Director's Roundtable, a video of Austin and actually someone approached, I think it was Wayne and I, someone came up to us who is from Austin, who's lived here for a few years, and she said, we hated it at first and now we absolutely, they love it in Austin. It's made a huge difference in their central distance district, safety-wise for pedestrians and you know, I mean, your truck was totaled, so I don't have to tell you about the backing out into traffic.
I've told people about it, I've got mixed, I said, just be open-minded, try it out.
Almost everyone, even the Bike Ped Committee said, mm, I don't think so.
The parking rodeo will be on what street?
Johnson.
In between section and Bancroft.
And we've got to figure out the liability.
Okay, so if you're closing it, how are you going to practice the parking, how are you going to do the parking rodeo if it's closed?
So they're recommending that people will come off of section actually and pull onto Johnson and be, we'll have to direct, chief is probably.
She has a little video if you want to watch it.
Yeah, but you're talking, he's talking about, um, with the streets being closed, how are people going to get-
Yeah, they're requesting, one of them has to close that section.
Right.
I think just for this one vehicle.
It'll work if they close it.
Yeah, that's what I was thought, thought there was just going to be like a golf cart where they kind of illustrate how it works.
So, the feedback I've been getting is people want to try an actual vehicle, so.
Oh, okay, so people can go actually ride the golf cart, practice.
Mhm.
And that's the rodeo.
Right.
I got you. Okay, so it needs to be closed for that.
Yeah.
I'm going to defer to-
Does, does the streets committee have a, have a preference between option A or B?
Richard's.
There's two, if you look at 18, there's an A and a B.
A preference between option A or B for the street closure?
It's 18, and what it looks like-
A just includes section street.
Eighty, eighty, uh, A includes a portion of section street being closed, B does not.
And I don't think we need to close any portion of section street. I think we can accomplish our goals without doing that.
I agree.
Because section is a heavily, that's, that's a lot of traffic on there, so, um, Arthur has kind of been the lead on, on, on this, so, uh, my recommendation is go with the option that does not include section street.
And those options were, the police department worked with-
Yeah, I'll have to say that, you know, after the MMOR parade, when that part of the street was closed, it was pretty rough. It was rough.
The section street part?
Yeah, I saw people having their own parking rodeo going around in circles at section of Fairup Avenue.
That's not the kind we want, definitely not. Okay, so-
Can I ask a question?
Yes, I hope I can.
The purpose of this is to practice this reverse park?
Correct, it is.
And we're going to practice it with a closed street?
Um, just the parking itself, people find it really, and, I mean, I'm a little worried about trying it the first time, you know, worried about how to reverse angle park, so it's just, it's not, it's not so much about dodging traffic, we just want people to feel it, you know, how it feels to back in to an angled space for parking, because you just don't do that.
You're not practicing to find out how it actually works in reality.
No, we don't, we don't want to take that chance.
The function that we're used to it.
Exactly.
Just kind of an awareness campaign.
Yeah.
And again, i- if this is the campaign we're striving for, when do you turn it loose?
After, on Johnson.
After a strike.
Yeah, we're, we're just going to do a tester on Johnson Street. Those, uh, parking spaces are going to be repainted and just test them out, just on that small street.
Okay.
And it's one of the reasons I handed that out to you, it was a recommendation that came out of that, that study, so.
Again, I'm, I'm one of the guys who's telling me to keep an open mind, I'm doing my best to keep an open mind.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I would see everybody plowing in the back of me.
Well, and we're trying to, and Jack, y'all brought it up earlier, you were talking about the, the beach renourishment, I mean, the Fairhope Beach Management Plant does have Magnolia Beach, North Beach, and so we're trying to implement, these studies we pay for don't mean anything if we don't implement the recommendations, we pay people that are experts for their advice and so that's, you know, we'll try this one first, low cost.
Sherri, don't go anywhere, I've got one more question for you, uh, on the other, it's on the agenda tonight for us to vote on the increase in the parking entry to the beach.
Yes, thank you.
Um, you know, I know there were some emails going back and forth, you know, I think late, middle of last week, did we ever get any, any permanent answer on the legality of any of that? I mean, I know there was some discussion on that.
I had attended the Fairhope Single Tax last meeting and, um, it was about the Tatumville development, but, uh, one of the directors, I'm not sure if it was directors or, or somebody at the table, mentioned that when the Fairhope Single Tax donated the North Park land, it was, it was donated, of course, from Fairhope Single Tax and some of the residents who are single taxers live outside of the city limits, so really, everybody that lives in Fairhope should have access to the park for free and I thought that was a good suggestion because, you know, I really didn't think about it that way, so, um, that would be, you know, I mentioned before, it was just inside the city limits that we would allow, you know, these citizens to go in the park free, really anybody that has a Fairhope address, just in light of the fact that, you know, it was a Fairhope Single Tax donation of land and some of the members or really, I guess, Leeses live outside the city limits, so.
But there were no legal issues brought up at that board meeting or anything about the legality?
No, it was just somebody mentioned it and so as soon as they mentioned it, I emailed y'all.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I've got no issue with it being assigned to the people that live in the city of Fairhope, whether that's inside or outside.
And that could- That might require a re-advertising of the ordinance though, if that's, that seems like a material change to me.
Yeah, I, I, because I sent it Tuesday, or Wednesday of last week.
Or Wednesday.
Oh, okay, the, the meeting was Wednesday.
Lee, how's the ordinance written?
And then that would be an easy, you wouldn't have to do stickers, you would just use a driver's license. It wouldn't have to be scanned or anything.
Yeah, you know, one of the things I heard kind of was that some of these people that are upset about the change are people that work in Fairhope but don't live in Fairhope and that they, you know, they, if I rent space in Fairhope somewhere, I should, you know, I mean, my personal feeling on that is-
Move to Fairhope?
Yeah, move to Fairhope, I'm sorry, you know, I mean, maybe, no, no, don't, 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 I'm moving to Fairhope, I'm sorry.
Scratch that.
But, you know, I mean, you can't, you can't, I mean, there's a, there's a purpose behind this and it's to make sure that this beach property is available first and foremost to the people that live in Fairhope, not saying, not blocking other people from coming, but making it, making sure that it's available to the residents of Fairhope.
Right.
I mean, and so, you know, you could go, you could take this to, everybody that works in the city of Fairhope can go down and there's no, there's no limit to where that can end, so I think limiting it to residents of Fairhope.
Because then you'll say, people who visit are spending money and tourism dollars, so invite too.
Yeah.
And having money to reinvest in our waterfront.
So it's free for everybody, is that what we're saying?
No.
I'm kidding.
I got one more question, what's the, the thought behind, uh, closing off Delamar and that section of church for the Art Walk?
Yeah, I wanted to get back to that.
Yeah, so, um, we got, I, I got a string of emails and, and some calls and was talking to both merchants and I know the police, Sherri Schwartz, I've had some feedback from her too about, there's music on some of the sidewalks and things during Art Walk and, you know, as we get more and more crowded during Art Walk, especially in that section from Fairhope Avenue to Delamar, there's a lot of activity and a lot of music and they've been doing theater, I think, yes, the RT or Theater 98 had a production, was it the end of last year maybe or, um, but it pushed, it pushed pedestrians into the street, so people are starting to feel unsafe. Um, it, it puts the police, and I can, obviously, chief can speak to that, um, in a tough situation because they're trying to get people out of the street at the same time, people are trying to enjoy what's going on entertainment-wise and it, there's just a, a battle between the person and the car on that Friday, um, and it's, it just caused them difficulty. We got, one of the, one of the people that emailed me was a, a merchant who invests, you know, a good deal of money in, um, bringing musicians in and it, he, it had to be shut down and it was, he was very upset, so, I mean, I've talked to several merchants and it's mixed, you know, the feedback is, well, what do you, they thought we were closing Fairhope Avenue at first and so there was, obviously people were panicked about that and when they found out it was just that one section, so people could walk, you know, Delamar Church and be safe there in the street, then everybody, you know, the feedback was, was good, but, again, this is another test, that's why we only put it on for one time, just to see what happens if people, if the feedback is, oh, I love that or, you know, I think it's awful.
So people kind of panicked when you mentioned closing Fairup Avenue?
And section street.
Right, clo- closing the whole, the whole block, there was a, and, and when I say people, I mean, um, there were some merchants.
Merchants, right.
And not all of them though, um, I got feedback that a couple, a few of them were like, oh, that's great, so.
Right.
It's really hard to, you know, to balance it and find out exactly is it impacting your business for the better or the worse. The only way I know to make, to help out with that decision is get some data, how are your sales, how are, you know, did people really not come if it's blocked? I don't know, I don't know how else to, to find out unless we test it. Is there, did you hear, have you heard anything in particular?
No, I mean, but the last couple of times I've been down there, you know, Fairup Avenue Avenue has kind of declined a little bit, if you will, during Art Walk, because they can't have the bands on the sidewalk.
Oh.
Uh, so I'm just trying to think about, about everybody, you know, what if you, what if you closed down Fairhope Avenue and Delamar, and you kept Church Street in Section where you, you know, for the flow of traffic?
Yeah, I think we need to take a quick little straw poll of the council, because you're gonna have to, you know, vote on one request or the other. Does anybody have a strong opinion on that? I mean, I, I know I mentioned earlier that, you know, I, I know it was a pain when Section Street was closed from Fairhope Avenue to Belangee on, on MMOR, but I also want to be cognizant of the recommendation from the Bike and Ped Committee. Anybody have a thought? I know, and you got until we vote on it tonight, but...
Well, I mean, my initial thought would be, anything we can do to keep the free flow of traffic moving would be better, and if that's leaving just part of Section open, then I would say that would be my recommendation.
I agree with that, but I, I would also like to consider Fairhope Avenue, you know, not talking to all the merchants, but if we're gonna try to promote walkability of that night, and it's getting more and more crowded, safety is a concern, and if, if, you know-
Sure.
People trying to cross the street, or, you know, somebody, somebody's trying to have a band on the sidewalk, and they're getting shut down, and they're not gonna stop participating in Art Walk, we're gonna lose-
Sure.
The Art Walk vibe.
Chief Patterson wants to weigh in here.
Yeah.
Chief?
I hadn't been to the last two Art Walks, but you live on Fairhope Avenue, right there by Stowe, yours, the fellow playing the guitar there, and then when you get down around the pub, you might have someone down there singing out there, and it gets out in the road. Sometimes they block, you know, a parking space or two. On Delamar, we have Mr. Bean Jeans down there, and the kids like to get around there, and so they're out in the road, and then you might have a band up farther, and then you have a lot of people that, what is it, red, white, and blue, or whatever it is, coming out on that side. And so, Delamar's always been a tough, because you asked me about it, I think, a year or two ago, we had, once it gets filled up, we would pull the barricades, and you said that y'all would like to know about that, that the streets, when the street was closed. So, I, I heard you say that if you had Section and, and Church Street open, people could get to the parking deck, and they could find some parking. It's gonna cut out on a little parking, but it's not a lot if both streets were closed. I don't know, I hadn't talked to the merchants, so I don't want to weigh in on Fairhope Avenue one way or another. I, I, I do know Delamar is where we have the biggest problem at, when I talk to the people that work, and when I come down, and I'll be down on this first Friday more likely, so, but, I, I, you know, they usually have one or two people out playing the banjo or something like that on Fairhope Avenue, but they usually, people are around the back of the car, and they get out in the street every once in a while, but it's more, to me, dangerous, it'd be more safer like on Delamar.
Okay.
Would you have a problem if you, if people had to, if they're going towards the pier, and they had to take a right on Section Street, and then go down to Magnolia and make a left to get to the pier? Everybody would have to do that. Would be, there'd be a big backup at that left turn? There's so many people coming down Section, people may never get to make a left turn there.
Yeah.
And, and I'm willing to try it, but...
Well, my, my idea, if this is a test deal, you know, we need to test it the biggest possible way we can test it, to find out if, if it's not gonna work that way, or there's a lot of complaints, we need to shrink it back down.
Mm-hmm.
Because, I mean, everybody knows I'm already, I'm always for closing down the streets and having a community event. Police love it, love me for it.
I know.
But, I do enjoy it, I just feel it's a great opportunity for the community to get together anytime, in a safe environment, so.
So, if more-
But what's the times? There's no timeframe? All day, or four o'clock?
No, no, it's, uh, well, six to eight, but obviously, they have to set up the barricades at five.
Yeah.
So, five to eight.
Well, about five, 5:30 they could set the barricades up, and then it'd probably be about 8:30, because, you know, people, it'd take them a while to get where they're going.
I would think we need to do it, as far as the largest, we need to do it, as we're gonna test it, to find out if this is gonna work this way, or shrink it down, instead of start, start short and working our way out.
I keep looking at Jay, like you're gonna channel Alex and tell me what the merchants are thinking.
I learned a long time ago, I do not speak for my wife.
You cannot, you cannot channel her.
She, she is a smarter person than I am, so I let her do her own talking.
Yeah.
And again, it's only two hours, and the other point is, by 5:00, Journey must have sort of closed, unless they're gonna be open for Art Walk, and Art Walk is by and large a walking issue, so I don't see any problems with it myself.
And if you keep-
So, which one of these is the biggest?
If North Church is open, then the parking garage is still open and accessible.
Well, I was talking about all of Church Street.
You're talking north all the way?
I'm just saying, close Delamar from Section to Fairhope, I mean, to Church, and then Fairhope, if that's what y'all want to do, from Section to Church, and just have that, and then, once they make, once they make it down there, they would have to get on the sidewalk to go around, which they've been doing it for years.
Mm-hmm. So, what about North Church Street, just leave it open?
Yes, because you, you, you're gonna have people, once, if they go into the pier, they know to come up Church, and they'll turn right there, Fairhope Avenue, and then they'll go back out that way.
So, let's see, so I'm looking at this item 18, so what I'm hearing is, if you go to option B, that's the, the last paragraph under, under item 18, that would be Johnson Avenue from Section to Bancroft, Delamar Avenue, and then you would eliminate Church Street from Fairhope Avenue to St. James, but you would include Fairhope Avenue from Section to Church.
Yeah.
I like it. I'm glad you brought it up. I mean, I think you're right, and Kevin made a good point about, you know, if you're gonna try, test it, test it big, and then if you scale, you know, scale back, or-
Yeah, go, go big.
You know, Section, Section Two.
Work your way down.
Yeah.
So, you just got two east-west arteries there, or one artery and one vein there. Section Two, Church.
Oh, they need.
Yeah.
It'd be interesting.
Then you've got your north-south flow. You can still get around it, you can get to the parking garage easily.
Is this part of this one, or you adding?
Well, this was A, and this was B. A, A has closing a portion of Section Street on there, which we're not recommending, right?
Do you think there'd be any pushback from any of the Fairhope Avenue merchants?
I don't, I mean, I imagine that's a possibility, but I, you know.
Well, yeah, if there is, we won't do it next time. I mean, that's the whole purpose of this, is to find out what the problems will be.
Right.
And you can't find out what the problems will be unless you enact it.
I, I think you're doing them a favor, other than people can't park right in front of their business.
I would get an email out to them and just communicate while we're doing it.
Absolutely.
Okay. My fault.
No, I get the light-
I'll take that, you take the back-end parking.
That's a Richard Johnson. We'll call him up for that, but, I mean, I, I worry about people walking during Art Walk anyway.
This was up on Section Street. This, this, the only difference between these two was this was closing a portion of Section Street.
Hold on, before, before you leave, Lisa was gonna say something about the ordinance at the beach.
Yes, I was.
The ordinance was introduced at the last meeting. There is no publication until after it is adopted. Therefore, they can amend the ordinance and then go for final adoption if they want to.
Yeah, the, the, I mean, I, I looked at it. The only thing that it says that, that would need to be altered, in my opinion, is the-
So, you close up this portion here?
No, none of it. Is where it says that a decal will be needed, as opposed to driver's license. Because it actually says driver, it actually says driver's license or identification for bicycle, bicyclers or walkers. If it could just say that for the whole shebang, then that would make it a lot easier.
Does it say bicyclers?
I'm actually not opposed to keeping it only for citizens.
I don't think that's a real word. I think I may not-
Like, we might need to-
Jay, I'm not opposed to keeping it only for citizens, though.
For, for, you mean, inside the city limits citizens?
Inside the city limits, like it's always been. Is this me? I mean, anybody else?
This is where I get it.
I mean, I, I, I don't know how many people are talking about it affecting the, the single taxers that have land, that don't live in the city limits, or, are we talking about a half a dozen people? We're gonna, that's gonna make a dozen people mad, regardless.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
What's that?
City limits.
The maintenance of the park is, is, is taken care of really by the taxpayers, so that's kind of how you can look at it, too, but I wanted to just mention it.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. Well, we can, it'll be up, it'll be on there for vote.
You got about 15 minutes to figure out what you want to do.
I think Eric Cortina's-
Let's see if there was another. I think, just in fairness-
Go ahead and come up and sit up here.
Wayne, you'll be a lot, there'll be a lot of things for you to discuss in this meeting.
Yes.
Eric, did you have something?
Sixty seconds. I want to give you an update on some, a few things that are going on. Sorry. Real quick, there's been a, a lot of discussion, make sure that you, everyone is aware, the retreat at Fly Creek, which is the apartment complex, they have completed their tree harvest. Kim Burmeister and I went and drove the entire site today. They have implemented, and they